...
Four students with us tonight and Mr. Gates. We have Santina, Juma, Addie Kimmerly, Mateo Navarro, and Madison Tucker with us. Mr. Gates, would you like to come up as well? You guys would just stand here next to me at the podium. I'll read all about this awesome group. Why not Missouri? This simple question five years ago led students in Kirk Gates's AP US Government classes on a four-year journey to create a uniform AP credit policy in Missouri. When students realized that many surrounding states guaranteed AP credit for scores of three, but Missouri did not, they partnered with the College Board and our local state representative Mark Elabrot in researching other states' policies and helped craft legislation. Representative Elabrot introduced the bill in the 2020 session, and Mr. Gates and students from Liberty North and Liberty High School testified in committee in favor of the bill. Unfortunately, COVID-19 and the subsequent shutdown derailed their efforts, and the bill stalled there. Fast forward to paragraph two. In 2021, Representative Chris Brown of North Kansas City, a former AP US Government teacher, reintroduced the bill. Again, students in Mr. Gates's classes went to work, conducting a grassroots campaign, reaching out to other schools throughout the state and lobbying Missouri legislators. In the spring of 2022, Mr. Gates and several of his students once again testified in committee and explained to the legislators the importance and impact of this bill. As a result of the students' efforts, the AP Uniform Credit Policy was passed last spring as part of House Bill 681. This bill, the only student-initiated AP credit policy legislation in the country, will save Missouri students and families thousands of dollars in tuition costs. Unbelievable. You see the photo. We had a chance. That was back during the Chiefs run, it appears, as we had Representative Brown visit, make a presentation, a great presentation, to the crew at Liberty North. You guys should all be really proud of yourselves. We have certificates. Mr. Gates, we thank you. That's Santina's and Addie's, Mateo, and Madison. And Mr. Gates, you need one for your room. Thank you. Let's give them a big round of applause. All right. We do have a couple of virtual presentations, but this one's going to be in person, and he stands right here. Step right up. This is Modi Williams. Modi promised me he's not going to put me in a headlock before the end of the presentation, right Modi? Okay. Modi captured the individual state championship in the 285-pound weight class on Saturday, February 25th, at the Missouri State High School Wrestling Championships down in Columbia. Modi, a 44-5 record. He's a sophomore. And in the final, really neat story, he defeated Liberty High School's Trenton Bendel in an exciting matchup, an all LPS championship. So quite a story there. We also want to thank Coach Blance Moore for being here tonight and representing the Eagles. The Eagles, as a team, finished with their best team performance, 10th in the state. So hats off to this crew. But tonight, we wanted to in-person present Modi Williams with an honor for his state championship. Moving. Let's go to the swimming pool, shall we? Avery True. There she is. I said we would have a swimming individual, and we have another state champ, actually a two-time state champ, as you can see from the graphic. Liberty North High School junior Avery True made history at the Misha State Swimming and Diving Championships on Friday, February 17th. Avery not only won the 200-yard freestyle event in Misha history, or she broke that record and secured the fastest time in the event, a record that had been held since 2019. Avery's individual efforts also contributed to the Eagles' ninth-place team finish at the event held in St. Louis. A huge congratulations to Avery True, state swimming champion. I want to also acknowledge head coach Mark Warner, swim coach at Liberty North. Thanks for being here. Really appreciate it. Mentioned we had a couple of team recognitions that we also had a chance to do virtually prior to spring break. If we hadn't done these virtually, we would have to call the fire marshal, I believe. But they had some conflicts, and this actually worked out great for them as well. We wanted to recognize the Liberty High School Sapphire Dance Team. They won the Division, the Class 6 Missouri State Championship. That's the 12th state championship in the past 15 years for the Liberty Sapphires. Combined score from their first-place lyrical jazz and palm routines, the Sapphires recorded the state championship. Had a great chance to connect with them over at Liberty High before an assembly. And what we decided to do is, instead of just do a couple of interviews, we were going to have them each introduce themselves to you here tonight.
We are the 2023 state champions. Now let's meet the Liberty Sapphires. My name is Alana Bryson, and I am a senior.
Freshman.
My name is Juliana Sergoso, and I am a junior.
My name is Sydney Rogers, and I'm a sophomore.
My name is Eva Hunt, and I'm a junior.
My name is Carson Reed, and I'm a senior.
My name is Avery Hastings, and I'm a junior.
My name is Mackenzie Overton, and I'm a freshman.
My name is Sabina Bonadonna, and I am a freshman.
My name is Riley Willis, and I am a junior.
My name is Olivia Di Giovanni, and I am a senior.
My name is Sophia Berman, and I'm a junior.
My name is Sarah Fane and Steele, and I'm a junior.
So there you have your 2022 state dance champions, the Liberty Sapphires. Let's give them a big round of applause. And we also wanted to recognize tonight, again, virtually, the Liberty High School Blue Jay wrestlers. That's four state championships for Coach Brewer. And the Blue Jays had a chance to connect with three of their four individual state champions. That included Christopher Coates, Hunter Taylor. Gavin Linsman was not there, but you'll also hear in a couple of these interviews, a young lady that made big-time history, and that's Lily Breeden, who became the first-ever girls' wrestling state championship for Liberty High. And Lily has quite a story as well. But Denise, if we could go ahead and roll those interviews and introduce you to the Blue Jays.
It was great. We had a great season, some good. We had really hard competition at the beginning of the year, and then we get to finish with, you know, the state tournament. So it was good to see our guys kind of wrestle well at the end of the year. And, you know, I think this team did some things that none of our teams have done before. They had the most district champs, they had the most state finalists. So I was proud of them for that, and we're still kind of young. And so it was, it's great to get them guys in there and get those things done and still be able to look forward to some more.
Yeah, I feel like the team's in a really good spot. As you talked about, we have a lot of young guys. People are very young, so there's a lot of room to grow. We had a really successful year. So I think the future is bright and will be dominant going forward.
I was pretty excited. It's my second one, so need something back-to-back, but I got more to do. Got more goals to accomplish other than just a state title.
Um, I was really excited, and I was proud, especially like being the first girl to ever win state at Liberty High School. And doing that as a freshman was even better.
Well, I've been wrestling for six years, and I've been wrestling with victory for most of my career. And I don't know, they just have made me who like I am as a wrestler today. And then Liberty High School has made me even better this year.
Oh, yeah. It all comes from being a team, and we all bond. So if we all work together and become one team, it's just us out there. But if we have all of us behind each other, then we get the job done.
So a big hand for the 2023 Liberty High School Blue Jay Wrestling. And we wanted to close tonight. Again, you probably saw some of our Facebook and Twitter activity over the last few days. Again, March is 2023 School Board Recognition Month, and I know our schools have reached out, friends here at the District Administration reached out just to show our appreciation and gratitude. And thought I would read the brief press release released by the state, and then we'll have some certificate presentations. Missourians benefit every day from the dedicated energy and countless hours devoted by our group of more than 3,600 men and women from communities across the state. These public servants are elected by local constituents and do not receive compensation for their tireless efforts. They are the local school board members of Missouri. During the month of March, communities across the state will honor the dedicated service of their local Boards of Education during School Board Recognition Month. The goal is to build awareness and understanding of the important function an elected Board of Education plays in communities and schools. All Missouri citizens are asked and asked to recognize the important contributions of these men and women and focus attention on the vital role these public officials play in the education of Missouri's children. So each of our cabinet members have a certificate, and when I introduce, when I say our board member's name, they will present each of our board members with certificates, I believe. There's even one underneath, multiple certificates of appreciation. So Denise, if we could go through roll call, I guess. We will begin with Mr. Nick Bartlow, Board President. Let's give him a round of applause. There he is. We have Board Vice President, Ms. Angie Reed. And then Board Members. Ms. Kim Marie Graham. And Ms. Karen Rogers. Again, a big, big thank you to our Board of Education. Appreciate all you do. As we saw tonight, what a night of celebration, so many amazing things going on. And I'm going to try to stall a little bit, as I always like to capture what's coming next with our final ovation. I'm going to capture it and post it later tonight on our YouTube page, or maybe your Facebook. Okay, now I'll turn it over to Mr. Bartlow. Thank you.
No, thank you. Appreciate all that work you put in, and good Lord, what a lot of great accomplishments. As is our tradition as a board, state champions, we recognize all of the effort and work that you all put into to make this happen. It is not easy. And I know you're surrounded by family members and parents that help to make it happen as well. So congratulations to each of you, and we give a standing ovation for state champions. All right, as we transition to public comment, I know some of our board members want to go out, shake hands, say congratulations to you personally, so we'll take a moment to kind of transition. But if you do want to make public comment, blue cards are out there. Go ahead and hand them to Denise, and we'll get it going. So we'll come back in 10. 7:30.
Cool. Look at you.
I know. Look at that.[835.66]
I'm impressed.
Look at us, three minutes early.
All right, moving into public comments. Just as a reminder, speakers may address any subject concerning Liberty Public Schools and/or education. Board members will not engage in debates or discussions with those speaking other than to seek clarification of their comments. Speakers will address the board from the podium and ask to keep remarks concise and to the point, and do not repeat what someone before has said. Person or persons may speak only once at the meeting. Certainly, if we have several patrons wishing to speak on the same topic, we may restrict the input to one or two spokespeople. Each speaker may be limited to three minutes. Profane language or comments that constitute a threat to the safety of others is prohibited. Spontaneous comments from the audience will not be tolerated and may close public comment. In the event board members agree, the normal flow of business is being unnecessarily delayed, they may by a majority vote waive or end public comment. Concerns brought forward during public comment may be addressed by the superintendent or appropriate staff members, usually within a week. With that said, I have two blue cards for public comment, and we will start with Eric Langhorst.
Hello, my name is Eric Langhorst. I'm a parent and a teacher in the district. I currently teach at the Edge Mecker School in LPS. This year is my 29th in the classroom and my 22nd year as a teacher in Liberty Public Schools. I've considered it a privilege to teach in this district for the majority of my career. The topic I want to address tonight is Missouri Senate Bill 134. SB 134 would prohibit any discussion of gender identity or sexual orientation in public or charter schools in the state of Missouri. SB 134 moved from the Senate Education Committee to the General Assembly on February 14th and is currently awaiting further action during the active legislative session. Unfortunately, SB 134 is not alone. A total of 27 bills targeting the LGBTQ community have been filed this year by Missouri lawmakers, the most of any state in the nation. Texas is second most with a total of 15 similar bills. Our schools should function not only as physical spaces for learning and the discussion of ideas, but also as spaces that provide support to all of our students, not just ones of specific gender identities or sexual orientations. SB 134 would only serve as a source of division and exclusion for many of our students. Our LGBTQ students deserve to be supported and respected in our schools, not excluded and vilified. I know personally how important this subject is and how it is important to have support for these students. My wife Jamie and I are proud parents of Addison Langhorst, a 2022 graduate of Liberty High School. Addison is gay and came out to us in the eighth grade. Addison had both positive and not so positive experiences as a gay student in Liberty Public Schools, but I can say that the support she received from caring and supportive adults who accepted and appreciated her, knowing that she was a gay adolescent, has made a huge difference in her life. I'm grateful that she had the opportunity to express herself and have mature discussions on current events and topics that directly related to her life. I don't believe passing a law prohibiting any discussion of a core component of what makes up your self-identity creates a helping environment for our students. It sends a message that a part of you, it sends a message that a part of who you are isn't acceptable and should be silenced. In the event there's any further legislation action taken on SB 134 in this session, I would ask the board to consider a statement that does not support the passage of this bill. A stance taken against SB 134 would show that you stand with our LGBTQ students in Liberty Public Schools and support them. I know that such a statement would be meaningful to a lot of students and parents in LPS. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to address the board and see.
Thank you, Mr. Langhorst. And up next, Jessica Scott.
Hello, my name is Jessica Scott, and I apologize this last minute, but recent events have prompted me to make it a point to get here even though I was a little late. Liberty Schools did not pick me. I chose Liberty Schools in 2011 due to my children have autism. They are in high school, were stellar. I have a current eighth grader at Heritage Middle School and a ninth grader at Liberty North High School. What I have found recently, and I'm not sure if you guys are aware of the disparities for special needs children and the extreme need for an autism specialist, not a BCBA, that is not a specialist in autism. So without all of the staff understanding what autism is, how it presents itself to each individual student and their mannerisms, until that is done, students with autism and many other disabilities will not properly be served by this district. Recently, my son has, was victim to a very lengthy and systemic event of bullying, which included a threat of shooting up the school, and the thought that he is going to be the first one that these students are targeting. I was not, I took him home. I had to wait over the weekend until administrators could talk and discuss the punishment for the students. I was told it was taken care of, he could return to school after spring break, it would be excused. He had, he was riddled with anxiety as he was still receiving threats by the same students while on spring break. He did not enjoy his break. This, he returns to school and there are violations of FAP, and this district is at a huge risk of violating that for not my students, my daughter also same situation years ago, but this is today. And there are many other students in this autism community, special education community, the very same policies, procedures, and safety standards are not being upheld. And I urge you to please consider hiring an autism specialist and providing more support, clarification, and transparency with the students in reviewing the anti-bullying policy to include communication with parents as to the punishment for the student's outcome of their investigation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Okay, into consent agenda. As a reminder, our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval by the board in a single motion. Documentation concerning all of these items has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. To assure an extensive and thorough review, items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. I have a motion for those items.
I move the board approve consent agenda items 4.1 through 4.7.
Second.
Denise, when you are ready.
AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And Marie?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Yes.
I just have a question.
You may.
We read that as 4.1 to 4.7, correct?
Did I?
No, it's what's, it's on there.
Well, I did, that's what the motion says.
Do we need to, because that's 3.1 to 3.7.
Good catch.
I move the board approve consent agenda items 3.1 through?
3.7.
3.7.
Okay. Now, when you're ready. Good catch.
AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And Marie?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Now, in this section. Fortune of the administration, starting with innovation and learning.
We'll invite Dr. Westfall up to the podium to provide the update from our Innovation and Learning Department.
Good evening. Just a couple of notes this evening from Christopher Hand, Director of Assessment, that his team has been working with elementary and secondary leaders to do training for our MAP grade level testing and, and of course, testing. So just to remind you that we test MAP testing at grades three through eight, and are, and of course, testing in Algebra I, English II, Biology, and Government. We have a process where we do school test coordinator training, and we completed that in the month of March, just finishing up. Our leaders then will continue to review those processes to allow and guarantee that we follow the state building testing security processes, and we will begin our testing in April. Also, speaking of testing, coming up on April 4th is our district-wide ACT test. So all of our students both at Liberty High School and Liberty North will be testing in English, Math, Reading, and Science, and then they'll receive their scores about six weeks later. They can look at those and then decide if they want to retest or look at sections that they want to improve. Just a quick update on our summer school preparations. We're currently still taking applications for instructional staff with selections happening after April 3rd, so that's the opportunity for everybody to be in the first selection process. Just a reminder, summer school will run this summer from June 5th through June 29th, with no school on June 19th, which is the federal holiday, June 19th. And then we have a summer school training day on June 2nd for all staff. And last few things, we have our district curriculum council meeting this week, so we'll be working on our planning for next year and our progress toward transitioning to competency-based learning and extending that through our K5 in classroom instructional practices. This will include the use of identifying learning intentions and success criteria, and then aligning those practices to surface deep and transfer strategies. And then one more quick update, kindergarten registration, moving right along. We have 328 as of this afternoon. So in case you were wondering, we are spot on with where we were this time last year. So it looks like we'll have about similar class size.
And that will grow between now and really August, as families transition, kids age into the program, or folks move to the community, so.
When is the MAP window open?
April 7th, the first day.
And it closes when?
When we finish testing. Joking.
Yep, cute.
I think it actually runs through the end of the school year, but we finish about the first week of May.
Nice.
So we try to get it done in a month. It's a pretty, Christopher has a really nice, pretty prescriptive schedule in the building principles, he's done a great job of organizing them all.
Been there, done that.
Yeah.
Works out well.
Yeah.
It also gives you time to, to, you know, be able to work with students who weren't in attendance, so, thank you.
And we are also doing, I don't know if you know this, we're a state site for launch testing this year, so.
What does that mean?
So our virtual partnership with Springfield Launch, they asked, reached out and asked if we would help, and so Liberty is now the testing site for, I think it's this quadrant of the state, Prudential Park. But we have quite a few partnerships districts that are going to come and test with us. So we're not responsible for their scores, but we will accommodate their testing needs. Christopher did that too.
All right, thank you.
And then roughly the eye-ready testing happens towards the end of May?
We try, I mean, we try to de-conflict that, right?
Right.
So they're trying to get that done now, get it done, so we can see where we're going to go.
Yep, perfect.
It does give us some pointers, those three pieces allow us to see that student projection of what they should finish.
Okay, good.
If I read it right, all the, all the students, I know, all teachers in the special ed, we have all the one position field?
I don't know that. Do you have that?
Okay, I thought I read that elementary.
Oh, in our current, yes, we have, yes, I'm sorry, I was like thinking for next year and I was like, I don't think we've done that yet, but no, currently, yes, we're in a good shape right now.
Okay.
They worked really hard to fill those spots, yes.
Okay, maybe some question for HR is, okay, I'll wait and ask it.
You can ask me anything you want, but if you're going to ask me harder, that's all right.
Okay, how are we doing on hiring? Okay, that's waiting, that's waiting.
I think we're doing really great, but I'm going to make sure that.
Okay, all right. I'll save for HR. Okay, thank you.
But if you want to know about some English curriculum, I think you'd know.
I have one other, just quick comment, just because it's about fine arts and the speech and debate programs with 20 students qualified for the national tournament.
Yes.
That really doesn't, I think, clarify how well our kids did at districts. If anyone has been following speech and debate programs in schools, we're like first and second, Liberty and Liberty North in both speech and debate in the team awards, which is, which is amazing.
And I'm excited, I mean, correctly, but we're also getting to expand our program a little bit and try to get some more layers in that to get some more depth for next year. So that also, Mr. Money has been really helping us develop that because it is, we're fully successful there.
Yeah, really, really strong with both.
Starting to look like sapphires and wrestling and.
And at that conference or district level, a lot of that that occurs at the regional Kansas City area, I mean, those, those schools are beating up on each other, so to speak, and competing against each other, both in our district and then across the region, making it one of the more competitive areas in the state to get through to that next level, whether it's the state tournament, or whether it's the national qualifier, those tournaments. And there's a few other opportunities before the year wraps up, as far as other opportunities for kids to qualify. So to your point, if you've been following along with social media, some pretty incredible accomplishments with those kiddos, so.
Thanks for noticing that.
Yeah, I just thought it was a little humble.
I just wanted to share too, the, the student showcase that my daughter did, I really, I hope you're getting good feedback from, from parents about the spring showcases. It was really remarkable to hear the kids around the room.
Dr. Moore worked with the principal to organize.
Talking about their learning, where they are, what they're learning, where they're going next, what, reminding me that I need to think, focus what on, what she has learned and what she hasn't done yet quite, so kind of reminding me to keep my focus there. So I, it was, I just was curious to hear if you had a chance to assess any of the showcase feedback that you've gotten at all.
I do love that you're looking at the evidence of learning versus just the grades. That makes me really happy.
Our plan next year is to, you know, have all 19 schools in the spring and to have the graduate profile, to have the student showcase their work on the five graduates.
Other questions of Dr. Westfall or Innovation and Learning Report this evening?
Be aware, we're asking questions.
Please, Dr. Westfall.
You're welcome.
Next item then, 4.2 is our Equity Report, and we'll welcome our Chief Equity Officer, Dr. Andrea Dixon-Sehorn, to share out.
I'm going to try and give enough information where maybe I don't get any questions.
Ooh, you've thrown down the gauntlet.
Good evening to everyone. I just have a few things I wanted to share. The first one being around our Equity Action Plan mid-year progress updates. Again, that's where I just meet with directors, one-on-one, and talk with them about the goals that they've established for the year. I want to read to you one of the department's goals, and he wouldn't mind me reading this one out loud. This is for the Assessment Department, and it reads, "By the end of the 2223 school year, 85% of secondary students will participate in the Panorama Survey administered three times a year. Secondary-level Panorama Survey responses around sense of belonging will favorably score at 55% or better, and 80% of LPS high school graduates will report favorably on the profile of a graduate survey with strongly agree or agree in the cultural category area." So I wanted to give you that just as an example of what, how the goals are framed, and then our discussions along the way at those checkpoints, if you will, throughout the year around how are we achieving that goal? What steps have you put in place to make sure that that happens? And in some cases, folks have already exceeded their goals at this point, and then by the time we get to the end of the school year, we can just have some reflections on, okay, how did things go? If we didn't meet the goal, what are some things we need to maybe tweak and just kind of pivot for next year? And just today, I was in a conversation with a director, it was something completely unrelated to their Equity Action Plan, and they said, you know what, I have an aha moment about how I need to frame my goal for next year. So this is really the grassroots-level work around equity. It's things that we are doing already every day, but just really leading through that lens of equity. So just wanted to share that with you, and we'll wrap back around with all of our directors in May and June for our end-of-year reflections. Also wanted to share that our Belonging PD for this second half of the year is kind of in wrap-up phase. Starting Friday of this week, we'll have our second round of Building Equity Cadres. We'll have Nathan from the Core Collaborative coming back and meeting with the rest of the buildings in their Building Equity Cadres. That's school leaders, certified staff members, classified staff members, and again, talking about the goals as they relate to their school improvement plans with that belonging emphasis. So that is underway starting Friday, and we'll wrap up by next Thursday in those respective buildings. And then lastly, I wanted to share that our office kind of took a different approach this year to our website design. We just kind of took an overhaul, if you will, working very closely with the Communications Department, and so we've kind of made it more interest-based with, with stories about what belonging is looking like live and in the present moment throughout our district. So as of this month, we're featuring Liberty High School, the Early Childhood Center, Liberty Oaks, and our Safety and Security Department. And one thing we've noticed since we've taken this different approach is that we're getting more views. Like, that wasn't our goal, we just wanted to just, you know, share the stories, and we're noticing even since the November where we had 69 views, January we had 73, February 84. And we're not like necessarily advertising, hey, we have a website, please go there. It's just people just interested in, I think, the belonging work here in our district. So those are my highlights to share. I'll take any questions or gladly any comments.
Any questions for Dr. Dixon-Sehorn this evening?
I just appreciate the website. I think storytelling is powerful. I think, you know, having students, highlighting our students, highlighting the work that is being done, and sharing those stories makes it very relatable for everyone, so I appreciate that work.
Thank you.
The students that you met with this year in your, you had a name for them?
The listen and learn sessions, elementary.
Thank you. Are you going to continue with them? Are you going to continue that concept with different students? Do you have, you know, where are you in that thought process?
Here's how I'm going to answer that question. The goal is for us to take all the data that we gather this year with elementary, compare it to what secondary students told us last year, and then really at the school leadership level, teacher level, take the ideas, the principles, that really kind of the themes that emerge out of those, those discussions, and really turn those into strategies that we're implementing in our schools every day. Because we've got to get beyond just talking to kids, and talking to kids, and talking to kids, because then they're going to be looking at us as adults, like, hey, I just talked to you last year about this, okay? These are the things that create a sense of belonging for me, so just how do you adult make it happen? So that's really going to be the work moving forward. Again, after we get the data set back and do the compare and contrast, it's really about implementing the strategies moving forward to make the work happen. It doesn't mean that we won't eventually circle back to kids and maybe ask, how are we doing? But next year, moving forward, really I envision for the next two years, it's really about doing the work of belonging in our schools. So I hope that answers the question.
It does, but then it also gave me another one.
Oh, boy.
See, you have to be careful. So, so is there a farther plan, like farther down the road, where the students not only are conversing back and forth, but that the students have more of an active role in how things play out in their classrooms, in their buildings? That they get more of the, you know, this, this belongs to me. Do you know what I'm?
I do, and I, and I can envision, because I'm a visionary, just in that moment, what I can see is, next year, if we incorporate the Building Equity Cadre concept, maybe what we do is add to it the student voice, bring them to the table, and that's a way for them being a part of that building community to have a voice and a say in, hey, here's some other things for us to consider. So that's what I think, it happens very naturally and organically in terms of folding in the student voice in our work.
I like that. Okay, I don't have any.
I think I can drop the mic now, thanks.
Not yet. Other questions for Dr. Dixon-Sehorn?
You know, it was in the Innovation and Learning Report about the college career readiness visits, and I know that you have played a key role in getting that funding set up, so it sounds like it was a great success. And again, appreciate all that you did to make that happen through the grant program, through the Kaufman Foundation, so thanks for doing that. And what, what's that future? I mean, what, I guess.
What's next with that one too? Well, first of all, I have to give props to Colleen Jones, who really just took the vision. We just literally were sitting in my office one day and said, hey, what do you think about? We worked with the Kaufman Foundation to secure the funding, and then boom, it's happening. So the grant funding will be available also for next school year, so we will use grant funds for next year to make that happen again. Future forward, I'm going to work with another colleague of mine over there, the lady with the pink, and see how we can just make it happen within our system, that this is just what we do with our own funds, by funding sources, to make that happen for eighth grade students. Because that is a game changer for our eighth grade students to all be able to go to a community college, a four-year college that is a career center, and explore all the possibilities. So we just want to continue that legacy here in LPS, with or without grant funds.
I know eighth graders are tough to get feedback from, Dr. Dixon-Sehorn, but have you had anything qualitative come through about their experiences?
It's not, it's not as difficult as it would appear. I believe Colleen has developed some type of feedback form, I know for certain from teachers who helped us to coordinate it and were a part of the experience, and I also believe there's some type of student reflection, and so we'll figure out how we can maybe gather some data and at some point share that. To just hear from students' own experience is what that was like.
And good feedback from institutions as well.
Oh, my goodness. There was one institution that initially told us no, but they, the word was out on the street that the other university, we need to make this happen, and yes, they were, they were overly excited about accommodating our students, and especially William Jewell, who kept rescheduling with us for that one school just as a unique extingue situation. So, yes, it is a great partnership for the community at large.
Anything else for Dr. Dixon-Sehorn?
Okay, I'll run while I can.
Next up is Ms. Cindy Sullivan, our Finance Report. You're going to hear from her multiple times this evening, a little later in the agenda as well, but we'll turn it over to Cindy for a few minutes.
Thank you, Dr. Tucker. Good evening. I have one donation to recognize tonight, and it's a monetary donation of $1,000 to Liberty High School Men's Tennis. This donation is on behalf of Luke Pershan from the M. Brody and Amy Pershan Family Charitable Gift Fund. We'd like to thank them for their generous donation to Liberty Men's Tennis. In addition to my report, I wanted just to let you know that tax collection, which we talk about every month, rate is up to 98.4%, so I'm very, very happy about that. And with three collection months remaining, you know, we could get pretty close to that 100% hopefully, so I'm very, very happy that that has rebounded back from pre-COVID. I'm going to beat you to the punch with a question. I did have a question submitted this afternoon regarding something that is on the consent agenda related to the fiscal year-to-date financial report for this month regarding the transfers. So when you look at that financial report, you see a transfer of $9.8 million from the general fund to the teacher fund, and another transfer of $1.5 million from the general fund to the capital projects fund. So I just want to speak to those and tell you what those are and why we make those as a part of our monthly financial statements. State statute allows for approximately 17 different types of transfers from the various funds. We choose to do two of them. The first one I'll speak to is the teacher fund transfer. And first of all, you need to know about the teacher fund. We receipt 75% of the state foundation formula into the teacher fund directly every month. And we can also receipt tuition payments that we receive from other districts, such as Missouri City students who come here because they don't have a high school in their district. That's all we can put in that fund. Conversely, the things that we then can pay. Conversely, the things that we then can pay out of that fund is salary and benefits for certificated personnel and tuition that we are paying for sending students outside of our district. So those are statutorily what we can do within that fund. So since we book that limited amount in there in teacher salaries, certificated salaries, and tuition is more than the 75% of the state foundation formula that we move into the fund, we eventually have to transfer money from the general fund to cover those expenses. That usually doesn't start happening until November, because we pay certificated staff administrators in the summertime, so our heavy call on that fund doesn't really start until September and October, when the teachers are back in school. So you won't see that transfer begin until November. But statutorily, we cannot be negative in that fund, so we transfer every month to set the teacher fund to zero. Why we set it to zero is we don't levy in that fund, and since it's so narrow in what can come out of it, we don't want extra in it. So we set it to zero every month, and as part of the consent agenda, you approve that. And then at the end of the year, in June, you approve that in whole. So that's why you see that happen every month. Then you move over to the Capital Projects Fund, and we are limited in what we can transfer to that fund. And DESI calculates that. It's called a 7% transfer, and it's typically 7% of your SAT behind the WADA. And for us this year, that calculation would end up being about $5.2 million. We have, right now, transferred in $1.5 million, because we like to leave a balance of approximately $2.5 to $3 million in the capital fund for emergencies or opportunities or expenditures that we didn't budget on. And so we knew in October, when the capital fund went negative, which it does every year about the summertime because of projects, most of the capital project work occurs in the summertime, and we knew it was going to take about $1.5 million to make that fund remain at a balance of $2.5 million at the end of the year. So we went ahead and made that transfer since we had the funds, and you should not see it change unless we have excess in operating at the end of the year and have things and needs that we know will happen in the coming years that would maybe make us want to transfer more into it, up to the $5.2 million. So that's why you see those transfers happening, usually beginning in October all the way through June. And I just wanted to explain that to you, since we did have a question about that, just if it might not be something you're familiar with. So that's the reason you see that on the financial every month, and I wanted to give you just a little education on that. Do you have any questions about that piece of my report before I move on?
A couple things to clarify, because I don't deal with it every day. SAT and WADA.
State adequacy target, which is what the state pays every per student weighted average daily attendance, after you subtract out local effort. So it's 6375. We do not get that per student, because some of the local effort that the community supports comes off of that.
Yep. And at the end of the day, all of these dollars are accounted for within the budget that we set for the year, right? So it's not like we're covering off on something that was unexpected.
And it's all statutorily legal, per state statute, that we can do these things within our budget.
Perfect.
Any questions, other questions on that piece of my financial report? I know it's after the fact, but we did have a question.
Very nicely done, so that the ordinary person can understand.
Thank you.
And I appreciate that, because it's difficult sometimes to follow.
It is for all of us. It's challenging. All right. So if you don't have questions on that, I wanted to also mention that the Audit and Finance Committee did meet last night to go over the financials, and they had other questions. But we talked a little bit about budget amendments and just the general ledger and how we budget in that, so they had some good questions there. They didn't have anything to bring to your concern. Tonight, as Dr. Tucker indicated, a little bit later, I will be talking about the preliminary revenue budget. Then in April, we'll do expenditures preliminarily, and May, the preliminary budget document, and then June, the final budget. That's what I have for you tonight.
Any other questions for Ms. Sullivan regarding the Finance Report this evening?
Thank you.
We'll see you in a little bit. 4.4, then, as far as our Operations Report, Mr. Stephen Anderson.
Thank you. Just a few things to highlight from the report that's uploaded. First, we are kind of in the midst of planning and preparing for summer school, and the main reason I wanted to bring that up tonight is for those families who may be watching and are interested in enrolling, the sooner that they're able to do that, especially with transportation and some of the work that we have to do kind of behind the scenes, that's very, very much appreciated. Also, a couple things from Nutrition Services. They are kind of, as part of theirs, some of their long-range goals, implementing some sustainability measures in our cafeteries, especially at the high school level. And it's in the report, in the middle of the report, they partnered with the Edge Program to kind of help with some of the messaging in and around that launch, so just wanted to highlight that as well. Our Health Services team has gone out, they've done this pretty much consistently here over the last several years, in providing some onsite CPR and AED training for some of our support staff. So they mentioned that. And then they have also procured free some additional Narcan supply, and so we continue to build up that supply at all of our buildings. And the details are outlined in there, but there's quite a bit of quantity at the high school levels, and then it kind of goes down from there. But we have pretty good coverage across the district. And then last, I think everybody here is aware that Officer Bratcher with Liberty Police Department is retiring, or actually, I'm sorry, he is moving back into the force as a corporal, I believe. And as part of that promotion, it freed up a spot here for us, and we've gone through a process. Gary Major has been involved with the interview process and working partnership, pleased to announce that they've selected Officer David Cronin, who's been with the Liberty Police Department for three to four years. So he'll be starting pretty soon and working with Officer Bratcher to kind of work through the next month or two to acclimate. He's very excited for the position and to work alongside kids, and we're excited to welcome him as well. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Questions of Mr. Anderson.
Are you going to let him off like that?
He slowly snuck away, so, thank you, Mr. Anderson. Next up, then, 4.5, our Human Resources Report, and we will welcome Dr. Deborah Delsom to the podium.
Good evening. So in March, our employee wellness focus was mental health, and participants that chose to join did a 30-day mental health challenge. And the focus of that challenge, they would receive a daily email, and the challenge was to strengthen mental wellbeing and resilience with that employee wellness focus. Additionally, this month, and Dee is here as well this evening, so today and tomorrow, the Grow Your Own Teacher Program, working on face-to-face interviews at both of our high schools, making those selections, and this will be the fifth cadre for Liberty Public Schools of those students moving forward. And at our May 16th Board Meeting, you will have a report out for that. Team Liberty has been actively meeting, and April 6th, we will convene again and have a recommendation moving forward to Dr. Tucker at the April 18th meeting then. Talking about recruitment, I got you. I'm ready. So today, we actually had a virtual hiring fair where we have partnered with Indeed, sponsored by the White House, and it's a, today and tomorrow has been with our operations group, and then Thursday, we'll be with Special Education. And so that's a nationwide, and actually some international interest on that hiring piece. With our certificated vacancies, we've had, it was in the report, we've had just over 50 resignations. We've filled, and you know, HR doesn't do this in isolation. The only way we can fill those positions is with our leaders at our buildings. So our principals and our directors do wonderful work in making those candidate selections and recommendations to us. And so we have filled over 35 of those positions already this school year. This board has approved those positions. Moving forward, you've seen some of those come across. And so we have just over 20 that we're actively filling. Each day, though, that we fill and we may get a resignation, it's a busy time of year for those to happen.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
And how long do you anticipate that period going as far as receiving resignations? Is there a date that 10-year staff have to indicate?
Well, the end of May, so by June 1st. But life is in session, so those can still come. And then we have a discussion with Dr. Tucker and move forward after that.
Inevitably, something occurs during the summer with, whether it's a change in espousals employment and move out of the area, and on occasion, even after the first day of school, right, into the fall. So those are very individualized conversations and how we navigate policy accordingly. So, great questions.
But we can see another chunk in April.
Tapers down. Typically, that early notice that we have for January gets a lot of that brought forward, particularly those that are retiring and have that plan in place. What comes after that is a lot of times those unexpected ones, where someone might be pursuing another opportunity with another district, maybe an administrative role, or just a change in life circumstance that causes them to need to resign from the district. So hopefully, that tapers down over the course of the summer as well, but we'll keep you posted should that change otherwise.
Question regarding Grow Your Own. This is the fifth cohort, right? So there'll be students, actually, teachers coming into the system to teach at Liberty Men's, is that right?
Yeah. There should be. I'll lean on Dr. Dixon Sehorn and Mr. Rosecrans.
Yes. We have one of four who is in the program at the University of Kentucky, receiving her master's, sort of similar to a state office, for example, or Mizzou. So we won't see her.
She'll even come better qualified.
Yes, yes.
In a great state, too.
The way that that plays out for us is in August, when we welcome teachers to that new Teacher Innovation Institute. Many of you have attended that before. You'll have that first batch, so to speak, present, and we can report that out, celebrate them as well. But yeah, we're excited about that.
I am, too.
Other questions for Dr. Delsom?
I just, the perennial monthly, whatever question. How is substitute fill rate looking?
Today was 83%, so we're on the rise with that, and we're working in tandem with Kelly Services, working on placement of building subs, and focusing on where our higher fill rates have been and kind of targeting that.
And so when I see for a neighboring district that they're offering perks for people to sub for multiple days, is Liberty doing that same thing?
We're working on a variety of scenarios, like last month foreshadowing, I said we were doing the March Madness incentives, so tailoring incentives.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
And their percentage fill rates might be higher, they might be lesser, right, in regard to how they're faring in those respective districts? So not entirely apples to apples, maybe red apples to green apples, but I appreciate HR, and again, our building-level leaders, looking at options and solutions. We're constantly looking at that and then working closely with Kelly Services.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Delsom.
You're welcome.
The last item, then, this evening, under Administration Reports, is the report from the Superintendent, so to highlight a couple of items included in your packet under my report. We've shared with you previously the progression in rolling out our graduate profile, which I hope everyone is familiar with, and then working closely with Getting Smart in developing some rubrics to other resources around our community that leverage or highlight employability or essential skills, whatever that might be called in respective organizations. We're working on a draft document, so that is progressing and moving forward, of which we'll bring that forward once it's more fully developed. Additionally, we saw earlier this month, in terms of that transition to MSIP 6, the release of our first APR under that new program or that new designation under the sixth iteration of MSIP. Keep in mind, this is a pilot year, and so we're getting a sneak peek as to this work. Next year is the second pilot year, and then it becomes completely live in the fall of 2024. That then leads us into a little bit of the work that's occurring under the Success Ready Students Network, in terms of making sure that we're thinking forward as far as what assessment and accountability systems might look like, because we know there's a better way, but at the same time, earlier this month, the APR that rolled out was a little bit more traditional of an approach. We'll speak to that here in a little bit later on in the agenda. Additional items to share out in regard to additional HR items, those administrative announcements that have occurred recently in filling those positions. As Dr. Delsom mentioned, appreciate all of our leaders that rally and assist with that process. A couple that are forthcoming are human resources director positions for classified and certificated staff, then also filling the vacancy of principal at Epic Elementary, and so that will be announced in the near future as those processes are finalized. Additional information we wanted to share with you is that we have had a series of community and building and departmental meetings since January started to present, as far as anticipating items that are related to Liberty Public Schools that will appear on the April 4th ballot just next week. Those items include a $120 million no-tax rate increase bond issue, in addition to a 50-cent no-tax increase debt service levy transfer. And the third item are the slate of candidates that are vying for three board member positions. So appreciate Dallas and others that have assisted in organizing those meetings. We've taken the show on the road as far as providing information to our community. I know Mr. Anderson and Ms. Sullivan, myself, and Dallas have helped facilitate some of those presentations. So April 4th is around the corner. The last of our community meetings is coming up with the Certoma Club on Thursday, in which I'll be sharing with them. The last thing I would say in that regard, be sure to get out and vote from that standpoint. Another piece that we're looking forward to doing in the fourth quarter is reconvening our Vision 2020 Committee and doing some rebranding around some items that are going to appear on our agenda a little bit later, namely the Success Ready Students Network and our demonstration project or innovation waiver, and how that's progressing. Looking to increase engagement opportunities with our community beyond what we currently do, whether it's at the administrative level, the building level, or even as a board of education and interfacing with our community. And then other items that will be considered as it relates to that work and that committee of Vision 2020 would be a community-based accountability model, where, as you're all familiar, we've developed our uncommon measures scorecard. But how do we take that another layer in terms of soliciting feedback as to what matters the most to our community? We've done quite a bit of that in developing our strategic plan, but really just continuing that conversation. Last thing that I would share is regard to the legislative session. They were on spring break as well, but they're back at it, and so it's kind of downhill from here toward the finish line for our legislators. But there are a lot of bills that we are tracking in the House and in the Senate related to public education, some great, some not so great, but continuing to navigate that. I want to express appreciation to Karen Rogers. She's had a long day because she went down and participated in an MSBA legislative session today. I'm sure she'll report out a little bit about that later, but was able to connect with a few of our legislators, share our legislative priorities, but then also tackle some of the current issues that are navigating both chambers in Jefferson City. With that said, let's certainly open it up to any questions you all may have of me this evening.
Another question. I'm very excited about the Vision 2020.
We got to come up with a new name.
Please do.
Okay. No other questions. That concludes the reports. Moving into new business, we're going to start with a handful of policy updates that are up for review.
So you have presented to you for first read, these are hot off the press from MSBA, several items that you'll again see in April. There are a handful of them, about three in particular, that are related to engagement, kind of a follow-up from my report, particularly as it relates to engagement with the Board of Education in terms of going about placing items on the agenda, how we navigate that. We have policy in place already, but some of these policies are a direct result as of last spring's legislative session. I think the intent of our legislators is good in the sense of how to increase engagement with the community. I think one of the unintended- I think one of the unintended consequences that we're hearing about from some districts is that what they pushed out last legislative session is all you have to do. And so from our district's perspective, with public comment and our, our meetings televised and updates shared and, you know, a follow-up from our board meetings pushed out to our, our, our internal stakeholders, our employees, keeping those pieces in place, but then modifying our policies as we feel the need to modify them. As compared to other districts that may not televise their meetings, they may not have a public comment included, who might view these policy updates as all they have to do. So the, the direction forward is how do we continue to improve our engagement practices administratively with the Board of Education and our community, not necessarily taking steps backward to minimize or limit that engagement with our community. Just want to clarify that. We'll take the next several weeks to comb into these policies. There are some engagement pieces in soliciting feedback from our community as well. We want to leverage our Vision 2020 Committee to be able to do some of that as well. But you'll see these again in April with those engagement pieces from the session last spring really being required to be in effect July 1st as we turn the page into this new fiscal year. So more to come in regard to that.
I appreciate that you made that point. As I was reading through this, and since I won't be here to vote on these next month, I was concerned that there are some things listed here that would actually move us backwards. We have very intentionally not limited public comment to items that are only in the posted agenda. And if we pass that, then neither of our two speakers tonight would have been able to talk about what they want to talk about. So I just think it's worth further discussion to make sure that we're not reducing.
And you saw some districts do that, particularly during COVID, right? Where they changed up their public comment practices and so forth. Again, I think that's an unintended consequence from the legislative session because I think the intent was good in terms of increasing community engagement. So good comments.
Or maybe school boards should have local control.
Yeah.
That's being discussed, too, in Jefferson City.
We're in a lotta body.
So more to come. Keep those in review. To your point, Kimery, and I think Dr. Tucker brought it up. We are planning to at least talk a little bit more about this in our study session, specifically on those three items, because I'm with you. The, the way that they've been sent from MSBA, which is great, gives us a chance to check them out. It might not be right for us.
Yeah, I agree.
And that was my question. So this is straight from MSBA as they are giving it to us?
Yep.
That's right. You're seeing as it was received.
Okay.
Yeah. So we'll have an opportunity to dive further in our study session, make whatever changes we feel we need to make prior to acting upon it or considering it at our April meeting, so.
And just to piggyback on what Kimery said, I mean, we spent several study sessions going through our public comment policy in the midst of COVID. And it was all about how can we solicit that feedback, get that information, and make it something that, that our community likes, right? And so that's one of those, I think that's important.
And I think something that our community has come to expect.
Yeah.
The only other item that's included is a procedure to be rescinded, IGCD-AP1 regarding virtual courses. A lot of that content is picked up in an earlier policy regarding policy IGCD. So just make note of that as well. Okay?
Any other questions on the policy updates? Again, that's for review. They'll be back next month. All right, into, boy, excitement. Preliminary revenue budget update.
Woo-hoo. As Cindy comes back to the podium, Ms. Sullivan shares in March, the preliminary revenue budget estimates and projections. We shifted to this approach in looking at revenues in March, expenditures in April, a preliminary budget in the month of May to ready us for budget adoption in June. Previous to this, we would hold all of that and have a more robust legislative, or excuse me, board retreat in early June prior to approving the budget later that month. This way, we kind of draw attention to each of the components, knowing that that process really starts in early January, all the way to the very last day in June. So we're going to turn it over to Cindy. We'll hear more from her over the course of the next couple of board meetings as well.
Thank you, and thank you for the cheers for this incredibly exciting conference.
Woo-hoo. Somebody coming in, so we like that.
That's right. This is good news. And like anything, this early in the budget season, this is preliminary, so we know it will change. And once we bring it back to you in May and June, we will let you know what those changes are. And as always, it's the, it's the information I have to the latest date, and if that changes.
It will change in five minutes.
And it will change every month. So we have to start somewhere. So this is it. So the first slide shows our projected total revenue budget, which is a little over $208 million. That includes all four funds, operating, teacher, debt service, and capital. This is about $5.2 million of an increase over the current FY '23 budget. And the primary differences in this overall budget are property tax revenue increase, and I will speak to each one of these specifically later on in the presentation, but a property tax revenue increase of $9.8 million, and non-recurring ESAR funds decreasing in the amount of about $3.1 million, and non-recurring device sale revenue decreasing by $1.6 million. So the net of those three major components is the $5.2 million increase.
Oh, I don't want to steal your thunder, but I'm assuming that property tax revenue increase is an assessment increase, not an increase in the levy?
That is correct. That is, the levy increase is not included in this presentation because that has not happened yet. So we don't, we're not weighing in on that one way or the other until that happens, so.
And your pie chart also demonstrates the reason local control would be important, as in?
That is correct.
Local funding is 60%.
And what you all, that's a great point, because last year, this local control percentage was 58. So it's already gone up to 61%. And state revenue last year was 35%, and it has decreased to 34. So that is, to your point, exactly why that item is on the ballot.
And this is an assessment year, right? So we expected that number to go?
This is reassessment year.
Okay. So we will only be able to capture a percentage of that total increase?
Yeah.
Because of the Hancock Amendment?
That's correct. Okay. Moving on, we'll spend most of our time talking about the operating budget because that's what keeps the lights on and the things that are most important. The operating revenue budget currently is projected to be right at $175 million. For FY '23, it's $172 million, so we've got about a $3.3 million increase. And again, that's due primarily to property tax revenue of $6.5 million increasing and ESAR funds, non-recurring, of a minus of $3.1 million. So there's our $3.3 million increase. And as we just talked about, one of the notable points I have on my notes is the revenue shift. The local revenue support for FY '23 was 51.75%. This year, it's gone up to 54.51%. So we're asking 2.76% more of a dependence on local revenue than we did in the current year. Conversely, our state revenue went down from 41 to 40, and our federal went down from 5.57% to 3.69, largely due to ESAR. I want to point out that the reliance on local revenue is getting heavier because state foundation formula revenue right now is flat. And that's due to the pandemic provision in revenues that keep it based on our FY '20 weighted ADA. So it's the same from year to year. Now, beginning in FY '25, that goes away. And with our enrollment staying flat and decreasing somewhat, it could stand to reason, if the SAT, the state adequacy target stays the same, that our state foundation formula will continue to decrease slightly every year, which then our reliance on local revenues will continue to increase. And I want to dive into just a couple of our most relied upon sources in the local and county sector. So we have no change anticipated right now for the overall tax levy. It is a reassessment year. In my conversations with the assessor for Clay County, he's anticipating anywhere from a 10% to 13% increase in overall property tax. That does not get down to the Liberty School District. So since that's a range, I've chosen to budget conservatively at this point. And we will not get our preliminary assess valuation until June or July. So I really will not even have a good feel for that possibly before the final budget book is printed. So we may be relying on 10% unless he gives me better information at that time. As you know, in September, we will set the levy and do a budget amendment to true all of this information up, but all of the projections right now are based on 10%. And right now, it's a flat collection rate at 98%, and I budget that historically. So I go through and look at both the last five to 10 years and see where our collection rate was, also considering COVID, because COVID data, as we know, you can tell on this bar graph, remember that years 20, 21, and 22 are COVID data and that they are not reflective of historical trends in our district. So we kind of have to bypass looking too strongly at those years because of ESAR funds and other funds that changed. So keep that in mind as we go through this.
Cindy, just a quick question.
Sure.
That projection is, again, Kimery brought up a good point. Assuming the Hancock Amendment's going to not allow us to have everything that would come in the assessment, we will likely take down the levy, potentially.
Potentially, yeah.
We're not there, we'll see.
Potentially.
Does your projection here take into consideration that?
The Hancock Amendment? Yes.
Awesome.
I run those through, I run those through the state forms to project all of that cap.
Yep.
And a new construction at the same growth rate. So all of that is taken into consideration. Yeah.
What's the percentage of the cap? I just can't remember.
I'm sorry?
The percentage of that Hancock Amendment cap?
Five. So inflation rate is 8%. CPI is 8% in December, and the Hancock Amendment is 5%. So you get the lesser of the two. And if you fall below 5% in your growth, you get whatever it is, but the cap is five.
And just to add, the historical tax rate, looking back, say, in the last nine years, we've shared this in our informational meetings as well, as the district, the Board of Education in particular, has set the tax rate every fall. You know, nine years ago, we were at $6.45. That held steady really for seven years in a row until we saw some significant increase in our assess valuation two years ago. And that tax rate was rolled back to $5.93, $5.92, these last two years. So because of some of those natural provisions like the Hancock Amendment, our assessed valuation growth and so forth, as we've set the tax rate, Cindy's going to get to that, I'm seeing now.
Yep.
That has changed a little bit as far as us lowering that tax rate in the fall. So we've actually had about a 53 cent swing in our tax rate from nine years ago to where we started or where we modified that a couple of years ago and then this, this most recent fall semester.
And to Dr. Pepper's point, I always like to include this slide because it does show the assess valuation percentage of change. So you can see that last reassessment period, we had 26% growth, and that was capped. So it's kind of crazy. And even in a non-assessment year, we had 8% growth. So to his point, this slide shows a little bit of that. I'm going to go back to where I was. Go the right way. Nope, wrong way. I just wanted to highlight the other areas. We anticipate a slight increase in proposition C, that's the one cent sales tax. It's anticipated that, that payment per wada will go up weighted average daily attendance is wada. So we anticipate about a half a million dollar increase in that. That's dependent upon the economy and how sales tax collections go. As of right now, they're slowing briefly, but they're still comfortable in projecting a little bit of an increase from DESI for that. And these numbers that I'm using are based on DESI information that is provided to us as far as what they're thinking they're going to pay out in the future years. We will also see, after a great year of interest income, we have taken that down just a little bit because it's expected that rates will start declining around December. So we've pulled back a little bit on that, and that's an easy one to adjust if, if that doesn't happen. Food service sales, as you know, they were fully paid, and then that provision was taken away. So we went back to having students have to pay for meals, and they didn't pop back to pre-COVID numbers. So we have decided to take that down just a little bit for the next year because we've had to do a budget amendment to decrease that revenue this year based on what we thought it would be.
All right, now I'm curious, how much off were we?
We're going to decrease that probably in the neighborhood of somewhere between $200 and $300,000.
Couple percent?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, other than people are just bringing lunches or not, and, you know, I don't know what the cause for that is, so.
But just to clarify there, we don't profit off of food service sales.
No, it, it needs to be a break even. And if they do profit from it, that goes into their reserve to buy new equipment for them. And our lunch rates are set by the state. We, we charge the minimum that we can charge. That's set. So we don't charge anything above that. If we do make money, it's because that our nutrition services staff are very good at the buying and running of their business within our business. So, no, we don't seek to profit from that.
And if we do, it is required to be spent on nutrition services?
If you build a balance, the state will ask you why.
Right.
So they, they do not, they discourage, highly discourage building a balance in nutrition services. Absolutely. And then Children's Services Fund, we are slightly decreasing that just because this is the second year of the current grant, and we've applied for next year. However, we are having trouble getting providers to staff our needs. So we have not been able to spend what we were allocated this year, unfortunately. Not for the lack of effort for trying, but there just aren't people out there that have time to meet the needs because they're so high in demand. So we've went, we've gone ahead and taken that down. There will be, what's not spent this year will be carried over for next year to be available. So expenses and revenue are added to the budget at the same time. So it's revenue neutral, expenditure neutral, it's budget neutral. So if that does occur, and it's on a reimbursement basis anyway, so we will true that up as it becomes evident what's going to happen with the Children's Services Fund revenue. But they're doing a fabulous job trying to meet needs with the resources that are out there for them. So that's why you see a slight decrease there.
Cindy, I know this is a larger question. Is there, are there any ideals down the road? And maybe it's a question I'm asking all of ourselves, because we know our children, children need more mental health services.
Mm-hmm.
Is, is anyone out here looking for those, have a pipeline anywhere that's working? Are we just going to have to wait till it comes? Because our children do need, greatly need mental health services now.
That's a great question, AJ. Can anyone come up with something?
Grow your own.
So there, there is a, a different approach rather than just sitting back and looking for broader availability among the mental health community, flipping the model where we enter into that space and hiring some permanent mental health specialists within our ranks to be able to service that area or that space. That creates, there's some advantages and benefits to that and some disadvantages. But that's something we would want to explore looking ahead. Just like every industry, workforce is a challenge, and so we feel like that's what's happening. Clay County is unique, keep in mind, because we're only one of, I believe we're up to seven, maybe eight counties now in the state of Missouri that have a dedicated Children's Services Fund where those revenues go straight into services to support, to support kids and families within their districts. So in Clay County, it's unique. Platte County, not too far from us, they don't have or benefit from a Children's Services Fund. So the, the call or the demand may not be as significant that what you're seeing within school districts in Clay County. It's a good problem to have, but at the same time, we want to make sure the supply is readily available, as Cindy was sharing.
Absolutely.
So I know Innovation and Learning Department works closely with that, specifically Dr. Meisenheimer. As each year, we develop our grant, we put in our application, and then it's reviewed by the Children's Services Fund Board.
And in our budget meeting this year, Dr. Meisenheimer did talk about, you know, asking Children's Services Fund if we could use these funds to hire our own staff. So she had to support that with them as well. So. So it doesn't go unnoticed and I know she's working in that realm to find what we need, so.
Thank you.
This next slide, I'm just going to flash up here real quick. We just saw this, this is just the history of where our assess valuation has been. And I will note that in this last reassessment year, we did have a new assessor. So that could account for some of that spike up there to the 26%. That and automobile values during COVID, so. Now we'll move on to the state sources. And as I indicated earlier, our state payment is based this next year still on our FY '20 weighted average daily attendance because that is our highest year since 20, FY '20, of weighted average daily attendance. So the pandemic provision, that's a state statute, has determined that FY '24 will also see ramifications from the pandemic, which will allow us to continue being paid on the FY '20 weighted average daily attendance. So that will be the last year. So as I indicated, then the state foundation formula for FY '25 will start to decline. And if you look at the operating projection spreadsheet, you can see that we have built that in that way so that that cliff is not going to take us by surprise because we're already planning for that. So that's something to note. And of course, the state adequacy target is remaining flat at 6375. You will hear more on that later. And there is starting to be some talk about the possibility of looking at the foundation formula and how it is figured. So there may be movement on that. Transportation, we left flat because currently it is still, for FY '24, it is in the governor's budget proposal to be fully funded, which fully funded means we get 75% of the allowable transportation costs. And as I always say, transportation is one of the first categoricals to be cut. So if anything comes out of the governor's budget, it would be transportation. But we are so fortunate that we got the full funding this year and hope that that remains in the budget for next year. And currently, we have it budgeted at full funding. Early childhood special education is mandatory funding and it is paid 100% based on the previous year's expenditures. And I just took that down just a little bit based on where we're at this year. So it's basically flat. So those are our state sources. And our federal sources, and keeping in mind especially on this slide, that 2021 and 22 have ester funds in them. So that's the rapid rise and then the decline back down when we don't get them any longer. But this basically is title programs and IDEA, which is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, special education, those are currently flat. We do not get those allocations until May or June. So keeping them flat is just the best thing to do at this point. We will also have potential carryovers, carryovers from a prior year being this year. If things weren't spent, then we can carry it over to the next year. And that only happens more in the title allocations where we sometimes don't have expenditure. Some of our title goes to the boys and girls group home and they don't always spend it. So that typically gets carried over. So that's where that lands. And as I mentioned, there will be no more relief funds currently, more to come on that. When I go to Moazbo in a couple of weeks, I saw that there are some new programs that are coming forward. So there may be some opportunities for mental health and safety and security grants that the state has out there with ester funds. So more to come there.
Cindy, you're basically, are you saying, I guess, the way I should phrase it, are you saying that the relief funds is what kind of created the peak that we're seeing there in the COVID years?
Yes.
And that if we discounted those, then we're really looking 18, 19, to 23, 24 is really the more appropriate way to look at that?
Yes, that is correct. Yeah, because those, a majority of those ester funds were federal. So that's, and that just shows how we were, what years we received them. And so, yes, you are exactly correct. Look at 18, 19, and 24. And you'll see there's a gradual increase.
Those funds that came in, we had an even higher expenditure for the kinds of things that they, we were required to spend money on. Right, so we weren't making any money on.
No, we did not make money on, no, not at all.
The caution too is for those districts that didn't put them into one-time expenditures, but instead, for whatever reason, folded those revenues into reoccurring expenses, staffing primarily. If they're facing a similar situation, they have to determine whether they continue to sustain those staffing costs or not. And so there's several districts that are in that boat trying to figure out how do they continue that forward as compared to what Cindy shared, where really for us, it's one-time expenditures.
We were very deliberate not to add staff with federal funding.
Right, right.
And you were very good reminding us the entire time. This is one-time, one-time money.
This is not something we're going to count on.
And everybody sees the influx of funding and you just never want to pay staff with one-time money because it's not sustainable and it leads to fiscal irresponsibility.
Right, right. I know that there are some urban legends out there about school districts and what we were doing with federal money and incentives to get it, and it's just not true because we were spending far more.
And there were, you know, wide opinions legally, whether it was legal and how they were done. So we kept it where it was very easy for us. And it's going to be very easy for us to do the federal auditing and reporting out the way we spent the funds. So we wanted to keep it where whoever was around when all of this auditing is going to occur would be able to go back and very easily support what we did. All right. Our last slide then is just the summary. And this shows the comparison of the total revenue, which you will see the total bar graph. The operating is blue, other revenue is orange. And just shows you how we've changed. And you'll note again, COVID revenue, however, you will see 23, 24 kick up there due to primarily an increase in assess valuation. So that's where we stand today. Again, I will reiterate, this will change, so.
It's already on a date, right?
It is on a date.
You just need to carry a placard to say, this too shall change.
It will. So that's what I have for you tonight. If you have any additional questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Cindy, just while you get it up here, what's the difference, the non-operating revenue? What does that cover?
Non-operating revenue is typically things like, I'll tell you exactly, the sales of devices and insurance recovery, sale of buses, tuition from other districts, transportation to other districts, things like that.
Perfect. Other questions? This is clearly not the last time we've seen this.
Yeah, I'll be back.
This is great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, into 5-3, Success Ready Students Network, the demonstration project.
So this is something we began talking about in the fall of 2021. As you will recall, the State Board of Education commissioned, along with the Commissioner of Education's guidance, commissioned a study group as far as a work group to convene last spring, is when it began, to explore new accountability, assessment, accreditation processes, practices, really centered around personalized learning or competency-based learning. And so several of us helped facilitate that discussion last spring in bringing a group of about 100 stakeholders together. Fast forward to June of last summer, that work group brought forward recommendations to the State Board of Education, in which we presented in Jefferson City. Those recommendations, which again, were to rethink assessment, rethink accreditation, move more toward personalized learning and competency-based approaches and that mindset. Fast forward, at the end of that presentation, the State Board was incredibly enthusiastic and their exact quote was, "We want you to move fast." So over the course of the summer, the Success Ready Students Network was created. Early last fall, the Board of Education approved our participation in one of three innovation zones. The first one is a system design zone where you're really looking at whole system change for those districts that are a little bit further along in the work. The second zone is an innovative learning design zone where districts may not be fully in or fully ready for that work, but they may have pockets of that work happening in their systems. And then the third innovation zone was really an educational support group where you have various associations, higher ed institutions, educational groups that want to participate and support the work in that third zone. All total, in that first and second innovation zone, you have about 25 districts in each. So a total of about 50 school districts that were working toward rethinking what accreditation and assessment practices might look like in the state of Missouri with the goal being to be able to submit an innovations waiver to the State Board of Education and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for their consideration. So that's where we're at this evening. That's the quick journey, albeit it's been a lot of work and a lot of time spent by several of our leaders as well as other districts, time spent with the Board of Education at various board meetings at our study sessions. And as you think about what's presented this evening, it's a resolution to consider participating in the demonstration project. Demonstration project is a term that is pulled straight from statute that is synonymous with an innovations waiver. So just as we are piloting the new APR and MSIP 6, as we participated in that continuous improvement process to get in front of things and help inform the work as we roll out MSIP 6, this is another opportunity for us to participate in an innovations waiver in thinking about what lies beyond MSIP 6. We're already starting that conversation even though we're just rolling it out, right? And so that is something that's forthcoming. We wanted to share that resolution with you this evening for your consideration. There's no action that we're asking for at this point. But I do want to speak to the timeline and and around what the next few months might entail. The idea being that the Success Ready Students Network is sharing the demonstration project with the State Board of Education sometime in June. So if we backward plan that, if Liberty Public Schools and the Board of Education wants to move forward with that demonstration project, we would probably want to look at considering this resolution at either our April meeting or no later than our May meeting. With that interim period between now and then being used as an opportunity to engage our faculty and our staff and our community further, just to continue to socialize this beyond what we've already done. So even today, we met with our principals, provided a quick update around our APR, the transition from MSIP 5 to MSIP 6, what the Success Ready Student Network demonstration project might look like as we think about growth to standard and measuring assessment, looking at assessment through through-year assessment rather than solely a static end-of-year MAP test or EOC exam. So that's really what we're presenting to you this evening. You have a second document that is a near-final draft, I'll call it, of the more extensive demonstration project. It's pretty lengthy. We're working on an executive summary that synthesizes it into some talking points. The way that I've thought about this is really a couple of bookends. If your bookend is MSIP 6 and the current rollout that we're experiencing here in pilot year number one, if that is a bookend. And the other bookend is some of what we're seeing in legislation right now, particularly Senate Bill 85 that is presented by, I believe his name is, I can't remember the name, I don't have it in front of me, apologies. But Senate Bill 85 actually calls for local-controlled districts and that designation. It's actually presented by a Republican in the Senate, her name is Jill Carter, found the name. If those are your bookends, the Success Ready Students Network initiative and that demonstration project kind of sits in the middle. It's not relinquishing accountability and assessment. It's really rethinking it as to how we can do it better and differently than what we've experienced under MSIP 6. If anything, it carries forward some of the good pieces tied to MSIP 6 that we've experienced in some of those standards like continuous improvement, the value of assessment, but really through-year assessment as compared to an end-of-year gotcha. But then it also factors in the ICAP, the Individual Course of Study, it factors in graduation rate, attendance rate. And then it also folds in real-world learning experiences like what we're doing in the Kansas City area. So those are the two extremes, but then centered in the center, in the middle, is the opportunity for us to innovate and pilot a better way of doing things. So we're presenting that to you this evening just for first read. We'll keep you informed along the way. The one thing I can guarantee is the final draft document that you have in front of you will evolve. Things will change because we're working very closely with DESI as to what they feel is suitable moving forward at the state level. But then there's also some work that's occurring behind the scenes at the federal level as we think about an innovations waiver at that federal level as well. So that is our update this evening as it relates to the Success Ready Students Network. We'll certainly continue to keep you posted on our timeline moving forward if that's something the district desires to pursue later or earlier this summer, so, okay?
I know we talked about that in a study session, right? But there's no direct expense to the district for a pre-assessment?
Other than time.
So I said direct.
A direct expense. The other thing that's important to note is there are districts like ours that use programs like iReady, right? So you get that pre-assessment early in the year and the parents in the room that have had younger kids have probably navigated that to some extent. You get that early, you know, year assessment to see where your kiddo's at and then you see that mid-year assessment and you see that spring assessment that then lines up with that end-of-year MAP test, right? We are fortunate to be able to have that system that then our teachers can look at the data and adjust instruction, generate learning targets or learning goals that then allows that student to then progress. Take that another layer, the student actually has visibility to where they're at and they can set their own learning goals and communicate to parents, right, at a PTA meeting or at a parent-teacher conference, at a showcase as to where they are and whether they're on track or where they need to make those gains. That's costs and expenditures that we take care of and we're fortunate to be able to do that. There are a lot of districts in the state of Missouri that cannot do that. And so that's where some disparity exists. So you have these districts that are moving forward in this innovations zone work, but then my worry is about those districts. How do we solve that problem for those districts who would benefit from some of those similar systems? Because right now, they're working toward the MAP. They're working toward the end of course because they don't have the resources to be able to do that. So there's some inequity that exists there that the state is going to have to address as we think about it differently, so.
And I just think it's worth reemphasizing for our parents. I mean, I think when I was, when my children were younger and getting the MAP score at the end of the year, the testing results at the fall, the beginning of the year, and then comparing that with iReady. And I wasn't, I was very familiar with end-of-year standardized testing. I was not familiar with iReady. And so, you know, but then it started to click with me. When I started my legal career, No Child Left Behind was very new. It was 2001 and it was, I mean, we were working on these tests being the only way at that point to really, that was how we were thinking about measuring. We didn't have this opportunity the way we do now to test through the year as easily. And I think that's when the light bulb really went on for me that, you know, we, when we are folk, when we had the ability to look real-time throughout the year, that's really where our focus should be. And so I think that was, that was, that was a transition for me. And so I think it's really worth exploiting because I don't, when I hear through-year assessment, sometimes I don't always think, you know, but now, now I see, so.
And that's the, that's the kind of phrase to keep in mind or front and center is the value of through-year assessment. But then there are three key words when it comes to assessment literacy. One is comparability, reliability, and validity. And so as you think of through-year assessment, we can project typically, per student, how they're going to perform on the MAP test and get pretty close as we look at that iReady trajectory, right? So the idea is if that system is in place and it works well and it is predictive in that regard as to how that end-of-year assessment is going to look, why not give students credit for their growth from where they start in August toward the end of May as compared to just that final snapshot in the month of May or end of April, right? So we know there's a better way of doing things. Some states have figured that out. Not all 50 states do it the same way. They don't assess the same way. They don't set up accreditation and accountability systems the same way. So we're trying to move the envelope at the state level in collaboration with DESI and the State Board, so. Great questions and comments.
Within the Kansas City area and the schools around us, do you have any sense of how many are considering this resolution?
Uh, great question.
A couple, is it several?
You have several, and I can pull that in terms of the distribution in those. There's two zones, remember, the whole system design zone and then that innovative learning design zone. So we do have Kansas City districts represented in both. There are fewer in that system design zone. Several who are probably doing quite a bit of the work wanted to kind of hedge and be in that middle zone and allow some of us to be out front and try to figure this out, but I can get that information for sure.
I just wanted to have a general sense.
I shared it at an earlier presentation. I shared it in an earlier presentation today, but that doesn't come to mind real quick, so.
That's good.
My short-term memory.
That number's funny.
Well, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, finish.
Well, I was gonna say, as much as this is a pilot, like you said, there's bookends.
That's right.
It's a pilot for a future MSIP perspective, but it is also, and certainly credit your involvement, it's a potential pilot for that local control too. I mean, they don't want to call it that, but
You're right.
In essence, if you're coming at it from both ways, you can consider it a pilot for either side of that.
If Senate Bill 85 gets through, and then the House version gets through, and the governor signs it, and then we've got this opportunity to really be a local control district, I would assume I'm gonna have seven people pretty quickly ask me, okay, what's the plan now that we have that greater autonomy? We've got a lot of things moving forward. We would certainly shore some of that up, but you're exactly right. Regardless of how it progresses, I think this is the right work philosophically to get down to that student level beyond just leveraging or elevating, I should say, an end-of-year assessment as the, you know, key indicator or key metric of which we know there are so many other metrics that make up who we are as Liberty Public Schools, so. Great points.
And kind of to piggyback on what Karen said, and as a, as a teacher who did not care for end-of-year assessments because of, it's just such a small piece, the other, I think the other thing you have to look at is with the through-year assessments, I as a teacher, I as a parent, I as a student, I can see how I'm progressing. When you have to wait until October to find out what happened on MAP testing, I've already lost six weeks of school. That, that, I haven't lost it, but this information that you're hooking into the end of the year is six weeks past. And so if, if I'm so geared onto that end of the year, I've lost, I've lost that time. Whereas when I'm doing through-year, I start with my students here, and then we look at how they progress through the year. And it's so much, I would, I just feel like it's so much better for the mindset of your students, for the mindsets of your teachers, and for parents to be able to see, this is what my kid can do today, not what they did in May.
And in October, by the way, is
Right.
Optimistic.
Well, that's true too.
Sometimes it's later.
If you change the MAP test, then we're all thrown off our game, so. I'm not a proponent of MAP testing, but I do love the three-year.
So again, we'll continue to provide updates with you as the work progresses and as we find opportunities to engage our community further, but wanted to make sure that you have the resolution before you to begin wrapping your head around the language, the full documents, but then also a brief timeline. If all remains on track, you'll have a presentation to the State Board of Education early to midsummer, so, okay?
Any other questions on Success Ready Students Network? Okay. Foundation formula study resolution.
Another resolution. This one, though, is presented to you for consideration this evening on first read, so it is an action item. A little context, so in our Missouri state history around foundation formula and school funding, we've had four formulas in our history, some that started as just a membership allocation where you look at your numbers and you submit your numbers and you get paid accordingly. And then it evolved from there where there were additional inputs that then created that payment mechanism for schools to receive state funding. And then in the 90s, we had Senate Bill 380. And Senate Bill 380 had some additional factors, and it wasn't being completely fulfilled, so a lawsuit was brought forward by school districts, of which school districts won. And then that created the new formula that we have lived under, since the passage of Senate Bill 287, bless you, in the early 2000s. The current formula has a lot to it in its calculation, but three quick items. One is the state adequacy target, as Cindy kind of walked us through earlier. Another piece is WADA, or that weighted average daily attendance. And then lastly is the DVM or the dollar value modifier. Those are three of the provisions that are kind of key pieces within the foundation formula. Historically, the SAT, state adequacy target, for the last 15 years dating all the way back to 2009, which is around the tail end of the Great Recession, if you'll recall, historically that state adequacy target has only grown over that 15 years, a total of 4%. That has not kept up with the cost of inflation, right? And so currently, that state adequacy target is at 6,375. It was a few years ago in which we were prorating the formula, where districts were not receiving 100% of what was projected that they would receive. Instead, it was a factor of that or a portion of that, all the way to the point where the legislature decided to, well, let's just call it good and consider the foundation formula fully funded, even though it was still being prorated. And so we've sat and lived at that 6,375 for some time. That's a little backstory. Earlier this year, in talking with DESI and the State Board of Education, publicly called for the need to revisit the foundation formula. During the course of this legislative session, you're already seeing several bills that are trying to tackle that issue. Senate Bill 17, proposed by our very own Lauren Arthur, a Democrat. Senate Bill 353, proposed by Republican Lincoln Huff, who was actually one of my former legislators in a previous life in a previous district. In addition, on the House side, House Bill 529, proposed by John Black. Each of those bills currently working through the legislative session call for an increase to the SAT. And so we know the current formula is broken, and so what this resolution does is it just solidifies the need to visit the formula and call for a study or a blue ribbon commission, we use that phrase at the state level, to be able to study the foundation formula. Because one of two things, one of three things could happen. It could remain the same, no change, and we still continue to work with a pretty defunct formula. We could see something done legislatively which we may or may not like. Or thirdly, we can take the time to study it and study it well and bring a proposal forward as a state as to what those changes to the foundation formula may look like. There are not a lot of people in the state that actually understand the formula to its detail, to its finite pieces, and I don't say that to throw anybody under the bus, but it's just how complex and how complicated it is. So this evening, you have in front of you for your consideration a resolution of which about 10 districts have been coordinating and collaborating. Some districts have already passed their resolutions, a couple on the Missouri, on the St. Louis side, one in the Kansas City area that I'm aware of, but we're working to try to gain some momentum to cause DESI and the State Board of Education to commission that study to focus on the formula. So we'd present that to you this evening for your consideration.
Questions before we go through it on the foundation formula study resolution?
This was part, gonna be part of my legislative report, but on the floor this afternoon, or I guess it was kind of around lunchtime, Representative Black amended a bill to put some of the adjustments for the state adequacy target. This was actually pretty exciting. There was bipartisan support and discussion around the idea that the state, the student adequacy target needed to be, they, we need to increase the cap, I believe, and I'm not, I'm probably not using any of this terminology right, but, but like over a period of nine years, I think it was, that they're looking at. And so that was an amendment that got bipartisan support on the floor, so I'm glad to see that there's some momentum down there maybe for this, so.
And a little further inside baseball, your state adequacy target is actually calculated based on MSIP and your highest performing districts and what their per pupil expenditure is, that's calculated. Keep in mind, we just switched MSIP five to MSIP six. We are not entirely sure what those highest performing districts are. Some are K8s, some are fully comprehensive K12s. That has implication on the SAT moving forward as well. Again, we're getting pretty deep into the weeds, but there are a lot of moving parts as to why the formula needs to be revisited, so.
And just a, just a reminder, so what is our, our average cost per student every year right now, approximately?
For all-in, around $13,000.
And that's not high in comparison to the rest of the, rest of the
Probably a little higher than that.
In comparison to the rest of the metro area, similar performing districts and
Right. The guy in line with our neighbors.
So the difference between what it costs us, 13 something, and 6375 is what our local population has to come up with for every student?
They have to come up with actually more, because local effort is taken off of that 6375. So you don't even get 60%.
And rule of thumb, going back to the previous slides, 33% again is that state piece, so then the remainder is made up either through local or federal.
Right, but our federal percentage is
Federal is small, primarily local.
Right, so it's just so broken.
Good point.
Well, you've seen recent litigation in other states related to, you know, adequacy of, of funding by the state, but they have constitutional provisions in those states that say we're gonna have adequacy. And so, you know, we've got that issue in Missouri that when you look to how our formula works, it's so local-driven, and that's why we can be 49th out of 50 states and what the state, you know, provides us funding for, for schools.
And that was the argument going all the way back to the first lawsuit in Senate Bill 380 and then the second, the second lawsuit in terms of Senate Bill 287. Again, districts won the first lawsuit, they lost the second one, and the judge's ruling that actually makes it harder to be able to bring a third lawsuit forward and actually have that on the school district's favor, right? So I think politically, this is probably the right path moving forward in terms of asking the State Board and DESI to take a look at that, and then monitoring what's going on legislatively, to Karen's point, and how that progresses this spring. There's a good chance you may end up with an end-of-year omnibus bill that then has a formula condition contained within it, but we'll have to watch and see how that plays out.
Your mastery of bill numbers.
I know.
There's a few that, there's a few that stick with you, but don't quiz me.
It's like an HR understanding of letters of policy code.
Other questions?
Speaking of mastery, maybe we should just assign this to Mr. Gates' class.
Great.
That's a good point.
It's a great idea.
Real-world, real-world learning.
Get that badge. All right, Denise, this is a read, right?
It is not.
It is not.
Can I verify we're gonna see each district?
So I move
I guess if you'd like to.
No, no, we're good. We're good. I move the Board approved the resolution calling for the appointment of a blue ribbon commission to study Missouri's funding formula as presented.
Second. Denise, when you're ready.
AJ?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Absolutely, yes.
Yes.
Thank you for checking with MSBA so we didn't have to read the whole thing.
All right, into 5.5 Contracts, Purchases, and
We have a few items for your consideration this evening, and we'll turn that over to Mr. Steve Anderson to walk us through those.
Yes, the first two items are related to conversion, which is one of our vendors with this intent upgrades and equipment upgrades. This was, these are both things we presented to you last month, and this is a purchase that required some signatures and some tweaking, so that's why we bring it in front of you tonight, as any of the records of signature, we like to bring them along. And then the, the third item is an agreement with the Cameron Committee, that's related to, to renew the, that we have related to therapy for certain CCC students in print. Then again, there's some urgency there to kind of get that in place.
To your point on that grant, that comes out of the Children's Services Fund, right? Any questions on either of those, three, four? Okay, I move the Board approve the emergency purchases actions as listed.
Second.
And Denise, when you're ready.
Adrian?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Yes. All right, into section six, Board of Education, oh wait, Legislation and Advocacy. I'd look at Angie, but
Don't go straight to Karen.
Busy day.
Yeah, it was a good day. I, I don't, I can't really say how many board members were present, but, but there was a pretty good contingent in the Capitol today and, you know, had an opportunity, the way the program worked, had opportunity to set up visits, and so I was able to meet with some of our lawmakers. This is the time of year where schedules are very fluid, and so you're not always able, even if you have a scheduled meeting, something comes up, there's a hearing or whatever. So I got around to a couple of them, and thanks to Dr. Tucker and Dallas, as he said, like the communications team, we had a nice packet of information that included our legislative priorities, our graduate profile, some information about our bond issue, I think we had the most recent copy of the Educator magazine in there just to give them, and MSBA provided some nice little notes for us to, I just left a note, if I couldn't touch base with them, I just left, left that in their office and left them a note to contact Dr. Tucker if they had any questions, but it was a very positive experience. And then they thought they were gonna start on the House side budget today, but they ended up going into some of these education bills, and the bill in question, I did ask, I didn't just remember this, was House Bill 497 was the bill where they had some amendments on that were, it was just, it was just a very nice, positive experience, like where they were all proactively talking about how there is a need to revisit this foundation formula, that it is outdated. And so, I mean, I don't know what in the end is going to come of it, things are very, you know, it's, it's very early in the process, and then as I was listening on the way back home, they moved into budget, and then there were some things being zeroed out in early childhood, like some of the governor's requests about early childhood special education funding, so I don't know where it's gonna go. I did ask a couple of legislators what they thought about transportation funding this year, and, I mean, they're hopeful, you know, never promising anything, so I guess the, it's all fluid, but I think the hope is that, you know, whatever comes out of the House will go to the Senate and that the Senate will hold the line on some of the most important expenditures for Ed, and just hope so. It was a great opportunity to engage. I would love to see LPS students there next year if we can get them there, because they have a third, on the third floor rotunda that, that overlooks the bottom. There were students from a variety of different districts demonstrating the kind of things that our students are doing with Project Lead the Way or Northland, their equivalent in the St. Louis area of Northland CAPS. So there were, there were several students doing their presentations there. It would be a prime opportunity for Ed students or other middle or high school students to be there, so it'd be great to figure out a way to get some of our people down there, because I know our students are doing that great work as well. It was nice to visit with them and nice to visit with some of our lawmakers, so a very good experience.
Well, thank you for taking time. I know it takes time away out of your day and appreciate you doing that for us. Anything else on legislation or advocacy? All right, upcoming meetings, you can see them on there, April 4th study session, bright and early, 7:00 AM. Gosh, that's next week, you know, this spring break.
Seven days.
Election Day.
Puts it on, that's right, Election Day, look at you.
Who's doing book study? I, AJ, are you doing book study?
We're talking about it.
He's asked.
We have a backup plan.
We'll see.
6.3, anything on board remarks from anyone?
I hope everybody was rested over spring break and enjoyed themselves.
If no other remarks, how about a new German?
I move Board adjourn.
Second.
Denise, you can choose who got it, and when you're ready.
AJ?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you all.